Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention, please? The Special Session 2 for the Seoul Defense Dialogue 2022 is about to begin. We ask all participants to please proceed inside and take your seats. Now, as a favor to all, please refrain from using your mobile phones and switch them on to silent mode for smooth process. Also, according to our COVID-19 preventive guidelines, we ask you to wear your face mask at all times during the conference. Now, simultaneous interpretation service is provided for this conference, so please use your receivers upon your language. Channel 5 is English, channel 6 is Korean. Now, the Seoul Defense Dialogue 2022 is currently being streaming live on YouTube. Now, we have a housekeeping note in front of you. You will see the Seoul Defense Dialogue survey sheet, which is placed on your table. So we ask that you fill it in and bring it to the second floor on the registration desk. So your comments will be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention, please? The Special Session 2 for the Seoul Defense Dialogue 2022 is about to begin. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, a very pleasant afternoon to you all, and welcome to the Special Session 2 of the Seoul Defense Dialogue 2022. My name is Kelly Park, your emcee for today's event, and it is my great honor and great pleasure to be guiding you throughout today's proceedings. It's an honor to meet you all. Thank you very much. Well, first and foremost, thank you so much for sparing your very valuable time to be here with us today, both on and offline. So without further ado, I will be beginning the Special Session 2, which is held under the theme "Media and Warfare: Tackling Disinformation." Now, to start off this session, please allow me to introduce you to our moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Cha Ki-an, Director of Global Affairs of Chungang Ilbo. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome up with a big hand.
Good afternoon, everyone. For those of you who have traveled to Korea for the Seoul Defense Dialogue, welcome to the country. We're very happy to have you here. Must have been quite a bit of a hassle traveling all the way here, but so glad you're here. And we are glad that you have joined this special session on, as our emcee said, "Media and Warfare: Tackling Disinformation." Now, war in this day and age, as you probably know much better than I do, is more than about the actual battles fought on the ground and in the air. It is a public relations war where the parties locked in the conflict are trying to sway public opinion both in and outside the country. So a war may be raging thousands of kilometers away, as is the case with the war in Ukraine, but we are bombarded with images and videos, day in and day out of what's happening there, and thus we become willing or unwilling participants in the unfolding tragedy, right? And it's a reality that disinformation is really running rampant, and given the social media environment that we have right now, there's a great deal of that, including a lot of fake news, if you will, aimed at influencing opinion and directing the dynamics of the war. So today in this session, we have a great panel ready to share with us how they see this issue and how responsible parties could and should work together to ensure that the public are not misguided by disinformation efforts. So allow me to introduce the distinguished members of this panel. Let me begin with Ambassador Stephanie Beck, who is Canada's Associate Deputy Minister of National Defense. She was previously the Deputy High Commissioner to the United Kingdom and has served as a political officer at the Canadian embassies in Senegal and Australia and was Canada's top envoy to Cambodia and Croatia, right? Ladies and gentlemen, let's have a warm round of applause for Associate Deputy Minister of National Defense Stephanie Beck. Thank you. Now, next to the Deputy Minister is Ambassador Daniel Wolvan, who is Sweden's top envoy to the Republic of Korea. Ambassador Wolvan is a career diplomat who has advised the Swedish Prime Minister on foreign and security issues and has worked on United Nations matters as well as served in countries from the Democratic Republic of Congo to France and India, all issues and countries which don't sound easy at all. Right? Ladies and gentlemen, warm round of applause for Ambassador Wolvan. Thank you. And let me go across the room to introduce you to Go Myung-hyun, or Myung-hyun Go, who is a senior research fellow at the Asan Institute for Policy Studies. He told me he specializes in North Korea and sanctions. Ladies and gentlemen, applause, please. Thank you. And also with this great panel today is Hans Shuttle. Dr. Shuttle is a professor of political science at Yonsei University. His areas of study are globalization, citizenship, as well as media and democracy, right? And before he switched to a career in the academia, I hear he was a news reporter in New England, where I believe he hails from. It is good to meet a fellow journalist, although you have moved on to bigger and better things. Ladies and gentlemen, applause for Dr. Shuttle. Thank you. Now that we know who all the people are on the podium, I think we can start with the opening remarks. I'd like for each panel member to spend about five minutes to start us off with their overall take on the topic, starting with Associate Deputy Minister Stephanie Beck.
Good afternoon, everybody. Very nice to be here and to see you all. Gamsa habnida. So today's discussion, of course, very timely, is something that we're watching daily. In fact, whether we want to or not, on our telephones, on our television screens, everything we're reading, there's no way of getting away from misinformation, disinformation, malinformation, another phrase that I've heard recently as well. If we were not seeing it during the pandemic, we're certainly seeing it once the invasion of Ukraine happened by Russia. So a wide variety of media being used to feed us information that serves the actors, but not necessarily our populations and our fellow citizens. It's used to deliberately undermine trust in governments, in public institutions, and this has very consequential effects from a whole range of things. It's not just a question of security from a physical perspective or health perspective. It's economic security that's affected as well, and this is very important from a government perspective. Social media now is the major media by which disinformation is spread, but it's not actually new, right? If you think back to even 100 years ago and more, where the media used was newspapers, was the written word, and there would be misinformation spread like that and disinformation, and then the radio, and then television. And we've seen that, in fact, in earlier wars, where the adversaries would be sharing information about what progress they had made or not and use that to deter the enemy, to push back civilians even, who were living in the places that they were advancing towards, to create space for them to move in. So this is an old tactic. It's just that now it's become overwhelming with the ubiquitous nature of media that you really can't avoid. I got some numbers on that, just to blow everybody's mind. I have to remember to speak slowly for the interpreters, sorry. 98,000 tweets posted every minute. So I don't know what you guys are doing right now, but if you post a few more. 60 million emails sent, and sometimes it feels like they're all going to our inboxes, right? 600 YouTube videos uploaded, and just on that, so there's YouTube videos shot by you and I, and you know what it is, and you know who the person is on the other end. And then there's deep fakes, right? Which is an even more insidious kind of disinformation, where somebody's recording your voice and overlaying it on a different image or having a physical movement that has nothing to do with what actually happened when you were speaking, making those noises. So those kinds of things are really worrisome going forward, because they can be very hard to pick up. So real consequences for all of us. Algorithms that are deliberately created to guide us into certain ways of thinking. Bots that are used to elaborate on existing messages that are coming from certain smaller communities, perhaps. perhaps troll farms that are deliberately paid, people who are deliberately paid to deliver these kinds of messages and to amplify things that are not true. Because after a certain amount of volume is created, tend to think, well, maybe it is true if enough people are saying it, and you start to second guess yourself. So we've had challenges like this in Canada, domestically, over the last couple of years. Of course, around COVID, as everybody has, it's the vaccine is unsafe, there is no COVID, it's all a hoax, this is just a reason for the government to clamp down. You're trying to get at me personally, all of these different kinds of things, which sadly result in depth of people who refusing to get a vaccine and then are catching COVID. And maybe they themselves won't get sick, but they might pass it on to somebody who is vulnerable. So how does government manage that kind of messaging and make sure that the people who need to understand do so? So implications for society are really very strong. The other impact around that is the consequences for those who are conveying the messages, right? So distrust of the media, distrust of journalists. And in fact, we've seen that in many countries, distrust of the health practitioners, the people who are passing the messages along. In Canada, we certainly had death threats against our senior health practitioners, those speaking on behalf of government. Politicians themselves conveying messages that people don't want to hear, also being attacked verbally and in some cases physically as well, which creates a cycle of, well, who wants to become a politician anyway? Or who wants to be part of government if it's going to mean risks to you or to your family and undermining that trust that we all need in our governments? And it weakens our ability to be able to achieve public policy and indeed, in some cases, economic policies as well. So it's very worrisome, particularly because it tends to mean a focus on minority groups, right? And more difficult for minorities to get their voices heard. And I would include women in those groups too, of course, but not only those. Canada has also been a particular target of misinformation abroad as part of our NATO forward presence in Latvia, where we're proud to serve alongside other NATO allies supporting the work in Ukraine right now. Russia very deliberately targeted Canadian soldiers, claiming they were living in luxury, for instance, and spreading COVID in the local population, neither of which was true. But the kind of thing that, so there's enough in there that the local population would think, well, maybe that's true. Well, maybe they live on a base. How do I know what their accommodation is like? And what do I know what they're getting up to? Just enough there to sow that kind of distrust. And then the other kinds of messages that Canada is trying to share may not be listened to with the same amount of care and attention. So at home, we're trying a range of different things to respond to this, but also to preempt it. So education around critical thinking, like think before you answer. It's very easy to respond to a tweet and just do a like or a forward. Take a moment, think about that. I've seen tweets myself where there's an article attached to it, and I've gone to like the article or to retweet it, and a message has popped up saying, are you sure you want to do this? Have you read this article? Which I thought was actually a really good thing. I don't think has anything to do with the Canadian government being really smart, but a good tactic for Twitter to have. And social media is not always good about managing misinformation. We could talk about that since there are media here with more detail on that. And a range of different things that Canada has done, and we can talk about more as we go through. But it's not something, misinformation and disinformation that has to be and should not be tackled alone. It's not for each country to do or each government, but we are far more effective as a group, as media together, as public servants together, as the responsible citizen, thinking twice before pressing a link or forwarding something. So I'll stop there and lots more to be heard for the rest of the session. Thank you very much.
That was a great overview of the issue that we will delve further into in this session. And I'm going to have to quiz you about some of the points that you raised later on. But for now, we will move on to Ambassador Wolvan. Yes, Ambassador, how would you like to approach, start approaching this issue today?
Thank you. And let me also set the outset. Thank the Ministry of National Defense for the successful hosting of this year's Seoul Defense Dialogue. And also want at the outset to echo what some of the distinguished speakers said at the opening of this dialogue, namely, the linkages between security in Europe and security in Asia, security in North America. And I think that theme is also what makes this conference so important and topical. As we meet here today, of course, Russia's aggression against Ukraine is ongoing. And I wanted to say in front of this distinguished audience that Ukrainian women and men who are fighting for their freedom today, they deserve our respect and support. And I think Sweden as Canada has given lots of that type of support, financial, military weapons and otherwise. But what we can see in Ukraine is also that Russia is using instruments of disinformation, which are by no means limited to the theater of conflict, but they're used in a much, much wider way. I think in many of our capitals, certainly in Stockholm, we've been thinking about hybrid threats for a long time. These hybrid threats can take many shapes. I mean, they can be cyber attacks. It can be instrumentalization of migration flows. And it can, of course, also be disinformation and influence campaigns. I wanted to start by offering just a very brief historical perspective and historical take on disinformation from a Swedish perspective. And then also say something about how we try to deal with this threat today. And maybe also about some of the challenges. And I'll try to limit myself. This is a very wide topic. I'll try to limit myself to antagonistic threats, threats emerging from state actors. I'm born in 1976. This is Korea, so you can state your age. And when I grew up, we still had phone directories. I think many of us remember these. And in Sweden, at the end of the phone directory, there was a few pages saying what to do in case of war. Anything from where to send your children to when you listen to the alarms. There was also a section on disinformation. And I didn't find the one from 1976, but I found the one from 1961. So this is 60 years ago. And I wanted to read to you what the advice was at the time. It said, "Read your normal newspaper, but be aware that false compromised newspapers may also be in circulation. Listen to the state radio, but check also other frequencies to make sure that the network has not been compromised. Even well-known Swedish radio voices can be imitated. Be alert against rumors. Do not spread information that has not been verified." Also topical today. Particularly when war breaks out, there is a heightened risk of false messages and false information. Any message that the government has capitulated is false. So already 60 years ago, we were thinking about these questions and issues. So I think that we can recognize that the challenges that we experience today have been with us for some time, as you also mentioned. The big difference, one big difference is that things have gotten much, much more complex. And I think technological developments, social media, are definitely at the heart of this complexity. You mentioned deep fakes. This is something that we've been thinking about and frankly speaking, worrying about in Sweden for quite some time. AI can produce deep fake, create discord. And I think the lack of reliable tools for determining the veracity of images and video is also a cause for great concern. So how do we respond to this? Any response, we think, must be grounded in our fundamental values. So a collective response to disinformation and other hybrid threats can only be addressed through actions grounded in democratic values. So any activity that we undertake to counter disinformation must respect fundamental values of free expression, independent media, democratic processes, and the respect of privacy. So to protect fundamental values, we must respect those fundamental values. In Sweden, I think every state comes to this from its own historical perspective. We, for a long time in Sweden, and we still have that today, we had a concept called total defense, which is basically, I think, in today's parlance, is more of a whole of society approach to how we defend our country. And after the illegal annexation of Crimea in 2014, the government, the Swedish government, decided that both wartime and peacetime capabilities in psychological defense needed to be strengthened. So there was a lot of work undertaken to do this. And it eventually ended up in a new governmental agency, which is the governmental agency on psychological defense. And so I wanted to mention very, very briefly what this agency's role and task is. So this agency leads the development of psychological defense. It offers support to stakeholders, including media, on request from media. And I think you can see this is, it can be a delicate question. And mainly also, it contributes towards strengthening the population's resilience. And this is a kind of first-line defense against antagonistic attempts to influence our decisions and perspectives. So just by virtue of introduction, I wanted to mention some specificities of the Swedish system that we can get into more later during the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ambassador, thank you very much. It's so interesting to hear how detailed the directions in that phone book were. That's amazing, really. And of course, we will talk to you more about the more detailed responses of your government a bit later on. Now, let me give the mic over to Yes, Dr. Ko. How, please, let's hear your take on this issue.
Yeah, thank you so, I mean, first of all, I'd like to thank the organizers, of which I'm part of, by the way. And also, I had a hand in designing this session. So I very much have a stake in making sure this session actually is successful. So far, I think we are taking a good direction. I think starting really well. Thank you so much, Mr. Beck and Ambassador Wolvan, for this. So when, you know, when the organizers set out to design this session, really, I mean, we wanted to talk about disinformation and also the impact of disinformation in the overall security environment. So so far, I think we're along in the right path. In that regard, I think we are going to hear more about it. But for my own personal contribution to this as an analyst and a researcher, I wanted to like, you know, give a different, I would say, framework to understand the issue of disinformation. I think we have to fundamentally understand that the informational space has changed drastically and all because of technology. You know, we can talk about Twitter. We can talk about Facebook, social media, and then the internet, obviously. But I think most importantly, I think the consequence of the technological change has been the multiplication and the explosion of the sources of information. So if we think, and I'll take back a little bit and then go back in time, I think the fundamental difference from the past, which is not that far ago, and you know, today, is that we have so many different sources of information at such an atomic scale. So now, each individual has been empowered and you are yourself a source of information. And also, you don't have to limit yourself, I mean, you don't have to limit to the individuals themselves, the humans. Machines now produce information. So increasingly, I think the machines are going to produce even more information crowding the information space. So what has changed is that before, we had a handful of actors, mainly corporations, media corporations, that essentially acted as a gatekeeper or said as the original producer of information. So the information, the way it propagated in the society was more like a decision tree, if you are used, you know, you're familiar with it. Essentially, a propagating tree from a single source to many different recipients. Now, it's much more complex. The propagation mechanism is flatter, it's more interactive, and then bidirectional. So we have this complexity right now in the informational space. And that has actually fundamentally changed the nature of information. Before, information was about communication, and it was almost always like a top-down. So essentially, a handful of, you know, corporations and media outlets that monopolize, essentially monopolize, I think that's the right expression, monopolize the production of information. Now, because information production has been democratized, so to speak, we could say that, in a way, the focus of information has shifted from communication to consumption. And I think that if you view information as a consumption issue rather than a communication issue, you have to completely change the way information is used and also how information is used to influence decisions and policies. So you could say, so if you stop thinking about information or communication and seek more information as a matter of consumption, then what becomes important is not the producers' information, the major ones, but the consumers themselves. So in a way, the reason why disinformation, which is a subject of this session, is so predominant today is because, in a way, it reflects for right or wrong the preferences of consumers themselves. And in that sense, I think we have to fundamentally change the way we conceptualize this information. So and then, I think at the same time, I think as policymakers and practitioners and academics, we tend to have this, develop this notion that we understand what's going on, so therefore, we can control it. The truth is not. And it's not actually just ourselves. Oftentimes, when we talk about Oftentimes, when we talk about practitioner information warfare, we think the best example of that is Russia, Putin. But then, I would say, actually, I beg to differ in that regard, because I think we gave Russia too much credit for the successful success of this information campaign back in Tunisia. But if that was indeed the case, it doesn't explain why Russia failed so miserably right now during the war in Ukraine. So I think we've been arrogant, as practitioners and researchers, Russia's been arrogant, and I think the question of what information is still out there, and we'll try to answer this in this session. With that, I, actually, you can continue on talking about this later.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cole. I'm very interested to hear later on your take on how consumers' preferences are really at the core of this issue, right? Okay, now, we're going to move on to Professor Shuttle. Yes, let's, I'll have you take the mic then.
Great, thanks very much, Chucky, and thanks, of course, to the Ministry of Defense for organizing the conference, and to the session organizers as well for bringing this together, and thanks to all of you for coming. I'm looking forward to sharing ideas with this group today. Let me just say a few things for a few minutes on the changing context of information warfare, as we might label it, in the digital media age. And I suppose this is an obvious point, but I just want to raise it at the beginning. We have been shifting over the last decade from a very long era in which the centralization of war narratives was pretty much a given, to a very different kind of era in which war narratives are now decentralized and contested. And what I mean by centralization is if you go back far enough in history, you know, the narratives of war were basically conveyed by national governments, and then in the long run, by historians, the media infrastructure that we would have even taken for granted in the 20th century wasn't even there yet. By the last hundred years, war narratives were still largely centralized in many respects, with national governments and their leaders putting out statements, and a small number of elite national news organizations and wire services conveying those messages. So if you think about the way that war narratives were constructed among the Allies in the Second World War, you had Winston Churchill's speeches in British Parliament, you had Roosevelt's fireside chats and his statements before Congress, State of the Union addresses, and Special Oval Office addresses, and so forth, and statements to reporters. But you had a fairly small number of journalists out in the field gathering information, sometimes journalists under conditions of bombing, think about Edward R. Morrow in London during the Blitz. And these reporters worked in newsrooms with gatekeepers and standards that made sure the information being conveyed was true to the best of their ability. Now, I would not go as far to say that the Allies were above propaganda. There's plenty of studies showing that in World War II, all sides sometimes were, you know, sugarcoating certain affairs, or putting out statements intended to kind of skew the truth. Whether it carried into disinformation is a conversation for another time, but, you know, I'm not saying that democracies were always straightforward with their war narratives, but they were largely centralized. Whereas the onset of cable television, and more recently, of course, the rise of social media platforms, this era where anybody can be a journalist just by either witnessing something that you randomly see, or you happen to be in a certain place at a certain time, you happen to be in a war zone, and you're communicating what you're going through, anyone can be transmitting now to a global audience. And that, you know, that rapid proliferation has led to war narratives being decentralized and contested. So you have contestation of war narratives within individual countries at times, with different narratives within the country about the nature of the war at hand. That's why Russia is working so hard right now to suppress social media platforms. I think what Putin and his ilk are trying to do is suppress any potential for a competing war narrative on the Ukraine crisis to emerge within Russia itself. And you, of course, have a decentralization of war narratives in the media, because who is a journalist? The universe of journalists has expanded tremendously. So this is true within governments and media sectors, and it's also true across countries. Now, Vietnam was said to be the first television war, if you think about the expansion of infrastructure. Vietnam was also unique in that you had reporters there in the field with their own equipment that could kind of walk alongside the troops and convey firsthand images back to the United States. It's no accident, actually, that the opposition to Vietnam and the United States had to do not just with the nature of that conflict itself, but with the immediacy that some very disturbing images from Vietnam were coming back. All of it, for the most part, true. But if we look at the evolution of media and warfare, Syria is often labeled as the first social media war. This was the first conflict where you had civilians, the targets of attacks, able to use social media platforms to convey to the world what they were going through. And, you know, if you remember during this time period, especially during the siege of Aleppo several years ago, there were several families that were writing posts on social media, talking about what they were witnessing, shooting video, expressing fear for their lives. Some of them ended up as refugees in other places. The 2014 conflict between Israel and Palestine also highlighted the power of citizen journalists. Farrah Baker, fifteen-year-old girl, living in the Gaza Strip at this point, was one of the people on the Palestinian side that was keeping the world informed in real time on the full extent of the fighting and the casualties. But how we define citizen journalists is a tricky business. Are they citizen journalists? Are they citizen activists? Are they simply eyewitnesses? In some cases, people that are conveying what they see or what they, you know, claim to be seeing, they may be opposition activists in certain ways, so, and propagandists as well. So, again, the diffusion of content makes it harder at times for everyone, for, even for journalists sometimes, let alone everyday citizens, to vet what's authentic from what is not. And now, we have the first TikTok war with Russia's war in Ukraine, and we have all the other social media platforms, the ones that we've come to know well, Instagram, Snap, Facebook, Twitter, and so forth, being harnessed by both sides of the conflict, and citizens around the world, of course, mobilizing online to rally or express their support of Ukraine. And although some of this has been toward the Russian side, almost oppressive, the extent that TikTok has been manipulated by people in China and also Russia in some ways to support the narrative that Vladimir Putin would support, we have to remember Vladimir Zelensky's capacity to use social media and streaming video as the president of Ukraine to convey powerful messages of defiance and resilience has probably been the most noteworthy usage of the new platforms in real time. So, you know, Zelensky's use of streaming video, for sure, is illustrating, in a sense, of course, he's been compared to Churchill. And there's a reason for that. He's taking the 21st century technology and sending the same kinds of statements as his predecessors. It's also noteworthy with regard to curbing disinformation, but also, this overlaps into suppressing access to legitimate information for the Russian people, that Apple and Google and many other big tech companies have become powerful agents as well as targets in this conflict. And I'd recommend to you, if you can pull it up, there was an exposé in the Washington Post published last year that looks at how a Russian executive working for Google in Moscow was basically bullied by the state intelligence agents for the Russian government into taking down an app that was being circulated, I think, on Android phones, and Apple had a similar app that was already in the process of being taken down on iPhones, an app that was supportive and favorable to Putin's opposition, and also potentially favorable to the Ukrainian side. So if you really look at the ways in which the Russian government has not only been having its troll farms, as Stephanie mentioned earlier, troll farms are a key form of disinformation, you know, Putin's government has been very adept at setting funds aside for these troll farms and literally cultivating these troll farms. So they've been working to advance their own narratives on the one hand, but also suppress potentially competing narratives on the other. And I would just recommend to you, I'm sure we'll talk more about ways that civil society and military actors can work together to try to curb disinformation, but if you're interested in this topic, one book that you can read that I would recommend, that I teach with, is a book called War in 140 Characters: How Social Media Is Reshaping War in the 21st Century. I guess an updated version of this would have to say War in 280 Characters, since Twitter now has a longer length limit. It's by David Patrick Karakas, former British journalist, and I think of it with regard to the troll farm question and disinformation, because what he's looking at in this book is how the actors in shaping war narratives are now very often civilians. And one of the most intriguing chapters in this book talks about a young, he profiles a young guy in Russia who actually wanted to be a journalist, couldn't find a way in to the kind of media position that he would have dreamed of having, something like what you do, Chucky, and he ended up, as a fallback option, going to work for a troll farm. He didn't know it was a troll farm when he applied for the job there, but once he got hired there, and he was given orders as to what to write and how to present it, he real, and the place where he was working too, it was some remote city in Siberia, where he had an internet connection, and he was in this building where other people were doing the same thing, basically setting up these false narratives that, to this day, I think, still continue to get circulated. It's not only governments, of course, that send out these kinds of messages, plenty of non-state actors do the same. But distinguishing this, as my fellow panelists have pointed out, is a real challenge that we continue to try to work with. Remember, the internet's only entering its second generation, so, you know, as urgent as this is, you know, it's not surprising that it takes time to work it all out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor Shuttle. That was a great chronology of how things have developed over the years, the decades, and where we are right now. In listening to our panel members going through their opening remarks, you know, you can't but, you know, get a sense of the feeling that this is such a complex world that we're living in. As Professor Shuttle mentioned, there were gatekeepers before who made sure that this information was based on integrity, and that a certain level of trust is there. But now, everything is direct to social media, there is no filtering, in fact, you know, things get massaged, as we like to say, and the end product that we get may be very far from the truth, like deep fake. So what are we to do in this day and era? Because technology obviously isn't going to be scaled back, you know, we have, you know, as Professor mentioned, the TikTok war now. I don't know this TikTok thing, you know, I'm in my 50s, I don't know that area yet, I'm gonna have to ask my daughter, but yes, this is where everything is right now, but there's obviously, we're not going back to the days when the, you know, the morning paper is where we get our information. So how do we navigate this environment? Can we go back to you? Yes?
Am I supposed to have the answer?
Well, try, try.
Yeah. And I guess part of it comes down to the sifting, the being careful about where you get your information and what you trust as the piece of information. Your telephone book was quite remarkable in preceum. All of that is relatable today, in fact. They even got the deep fake stuff before we knew it could happen. That's very impressive. And I think it comes down to having that pause, right? If you know you're reading something in, say, a written piece, a newspaper that was published by a reputable firm that does fact-checking, that trusts its sources, that triple-checks its sources, you might have one approach to your understanding of that piece of information and how you would share it, if you would share it, versus something that's coming in through TikTok or Instagram, or the rumors that your telephone book referred to as well. And I think a lot of that comes down to education, right, and who your colleagues are, and your friends, and your family, because, and the surveys that we've done in Canada, at any rate, we find that most people get their information that they trust from their friends and their family. And if their friends and their family are not well-informed, well, then, that is the kind of information that is going to continue to circulate. We've noted in the war in Ukraine, some of the work that has been done, that has been extremely effective, has in fact been private business coming together to supply imagery to the Ukrainian government. So certainly, governments have supplied that as well through our various accesses to information to the Ukrainian government, but in Canada alone, we've had a number of private companies, whose business it is, to track what's going on, for whatever reason, meteorological or other, and have come forward and offered that information. And the analysis of that has proven extremely valuable to the Ukrainian government in terms of targeting and making decisions on where to send their troops and other. And one other part of that, that I think is valuable in terms of countering disinformation, is, and you will have seen this open source, the tracking through imagery of atrocities committed. So when we're looking eventually to prosecute war crimes for what has happened in Ukraine, we have visual imagery of even down to a certain street, and you will, some of you recall maybe the man who was on a bicycle, and on one moment, he was riding, the next moment, he was dead, and there were Russian soldiers who had been nearby, and the man was clearly not armed. But this is open-source imagery, this is publicly available information where concerned citizens coming together are sharing images and information that can make a difference, and can in fact have a war criminal prosecuted successfully. So that's the good part about all of us coming together to make a difference.
Okay, great, great to know. I want to go to Dr. Cole, because you mentioned, you know, obviously, the explosion of information that we have, and, you know, it's on, as you, I quote you, atomic scale, right? And as I said, we're never going back. So how would you suggest we deal with this excess of information that we have?
So I think that's a really good question. I mean, I was hoping to find answers from my fellow panelists, but then you put me on the spot, so I'll rise up to the challenge and provide an explanation, and then what I think could be done.
Yes, please.
So I think I, you know, stick to the idea that, you know, the information is, the informational space is, today is more about consumption than communication, then, you know, I think we can apply the analogy and think about what are the trusted sources of information, or trusted providers of products in a consumption space. And so, in consumption, what people trust are brands, right? Essentially, companies and corporations, they try to build so-called branding, because, you know, branding, you can easily surpass your rivals in the competition for eyeballs or attention of the consumers. When you look at, you know, good brands, you don't think, you know, you don't really check the product itself and try to gauge whether it's good or bad, you trust the brand, so you just, therefore, you buy it. I think the same applies to the information space. If the source information is trusted, and then we oftentimes, we don't use like, you know, the, such a Philistine or like branding in the communication field or media, but it is what it is. And then, in terms of, you know, like in communication field, we say, like, instead of branding, we call it reputation, you know, we say, reputation is also information. But in truth, that's essentially branding. I mean, the famous communication outlets and media companies say like, you know, I don't want to, I mean, maybe the New York Times or Washington Post, these are brands. So people, you know, trust the articles that come out from these newspapers, because, you know, these media outlets have developed a reputation for being trustworthy and objective. So this is, I mean, this is very typical of any other markets, when you have many proliferation of different producers and products, you don't know which one is good, which one's bad, then, you know, like, people tend to go for the familiar brands. So I think that same logic and dynamic is going to be applied to the social media space too. So we are seeing, in a way, I mean, from my point of view, the emergence of branding, and then essentially, conglomerate, no conglomeration, but then there's a concentration of, you know, trust and, I mean, reputation in the, even in the social media space, and we call them influencers. So when you talk of influencers, we laugh, because it's kind of funny, you know, they do like antics, and then they make funny videos on TikTok and Facebook and Twitter, but I think that's exactly what's happening. People, you know, when the social media started out in the, you know, ten years ago or so, there's so much like, you know, atomization of a source of information, everybody was the same, everybody was actually equal to each other, but over time, you know, good sources of information are developing a reputation, either for like attraction, you know, it's fun to watch certain movies made by, you know, certain actors, or like influencers so-called, but then others are not. So essentially, there's a natural, there is some kind of selection process going on. Eventually, we see an emergence of one-person media empires. So I think we have to apply the same logic when it comes to policy as well. So I think that what's most important is to develop a reputation for trustworthiness. I think many, you know, governments lack this issue, because we are not very careful with managing, I mean, I'm talking, when I say we are talking about the public sector, on behalf of the public sector in this case, you know, the governments especially, they don't care much about their branding. I mean, we know that our policies are not that consistent, they change according to the political cycles. I think we have to be very careful with that. I think it breeds cynicism, and then more importantly, I think it undermines trust in the public sector and the government. So consistency is very important. But in order to have a consistency, I think we have to strengthen the institutions. I mean, it sounds like cliche, but this is what it is, because reputation is, it's not like a magic process. I mean, in order to develop a reputation, it's not a magic process, it takes time, it's actually hard work, it's very, I would say, a very plain kind of a labor. So that's what we have to do, and that means that the current era of, you know, disinformation can only be ended if we put enough effort and time to build and for strengthen our
So, Dr. Cole, do you think there's still a chance for legacy media, like the one that I work for?
No, yeah, I think, well, you know, is this the right place to talk about this?
Okay, okay, all right, all right, let you off the hook. Thank you, thank you, absolutely right. Yes, now, I want to go back to Ambassador Wolvan, because that phone book, the Swedish phone book, is stuck in my head. That is amazing, very Swedish, I think, to have that in that book, but, you know, because the Swedish government had that kind of foresight, has that carried on to this day where Swedish society is more careful, for instance, in how you deal with all of the social media and all of the information available now? Would you say there's such a culture in your country?
I don't, I wish I could say that, that we Swedes are more careful when it comes to social media than is the case in other countries. I think we have exactly the same challenges as other open democratic societies, as what you see here in Korea. But what I would like to add are two things. You mentioned that we're not going back to the days where we get our information from the newspaper in the morning. I think some of us still do, but that's probably more a question of age than anything else. But what we have seen in Sweden is that in times of crisis, for example, during for example, during the Corona crisis, during when the Corona epidemic was coming, many people actually turned to radio, well-known newspapers, well-known public service news service. And that's where, that's where many people got their information from, which was maybe a surprise to some. And we've been working a little bit on that in Sweden. There's a Twitter account now called Crisis Information, that whenever there is something big happening in Swedish society, this Twitter account that's run by state agency will be very active. And they have lots of followers. So while we get information from many sources that are difficult to control, I don't think that means that traditional sources of information, including information from government, will still not continue to play a role. I think it will, you know, shown to be quite effective in cases of crisis. Then I also wanted to mention, since we're talking about social media platforms, some of you are aware there's ongoing discussions in Brussels on a new Digital Services Act. And one of the proposals is that social media companies would share in the responsibility for content that is spread through their platforms. So some kind of, I'm not a journalist, but some kind of editorial responsibility that I think you're very well aware of when you work in traditional media. So that's another area of discussion that I think is important when it comes to information and disinformation. Because we don't want these, these social media to be involuntarily spread, to be sort of involuntarily be vehicles for spreading of disinformation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Sweden falls back to trusted media in times of crisis. That is good to know. I hope that can be the situation in many other countries around the world, given what we have in the social media sphere right now. I want to be able to explore what were some of the maybe disinformation efforts that perhaps affected modern warfare? And how the response was to such an effort? Professor Shuttle, do you think you can help us out on that?
Well, we're certainly seeing it now with the Russia-Ukraine conflict. I suppose we saw it at various points in the Cold War as well. I mean, even if I can just turn scrutiny to my own country, the United States, even the leaks of the Pentagon Papers in the 1960s were basically revealing to the public at that point in time that the war in Vietnam was going worse than the American government was telling the public. The reason why the US government fought the New York Times and fought the Washington Post, even going to court for a time to try to suppress publication of that was because the war narrative, and it was a centralized war narrative at that, was more optimistic than the actual conditions on the ground. So even, I mean, there's the famous aphorism, I think it was uttered by a US senator in 1918 after World War One. The, you know, the quote that we often hear in wartime, "The first casualty is truth." The senator who said that, said that a little bit differently. But again, just like the Swedish phone book, the problem of disinformation has been recognized for a very long time. I believe even in the American Civil War in the 1860s, you know, before you really had mass media fully nationalized in the US, or at least, you know, something the equivalent of radio and television in the US, which could broadcast across the country. When the news organizations in the US were city-based, not nation-based, and Americans at this point in history didn't even see themselves as Americans. They saw themselves as tied to their particular states. You know, we talked about the US in the 1860s as the union, a collection of states. Even back then, the Lincoln administration, I believe, was conveying at times some distorted messaging or, you know, propagandistic messaging about the civil war, focusing more on the cause as opposed to how badly, say, General McClellan was doing trying to keep the North going. You know, that was a centralized narrative that was not entirely accurate. Would it fit the category of disinformation? Was it outright false? Well, maybe not. But was it true? Well, maybe not either. I think democratic governments even have, you know, put themselves into some gray areas over the past century with regard to disinformation. So I don't want to sit here, I mean, I obviously am not a fan of Putin's government, as you can see, but I don't want to sit here and say that, well, it's the bad guys, it's the dictatorships, and they're appointed trolls, they're hired guns that are putting out all the disinformation. We democracies are on the good side of this. No. And, I mean, one good thing about the fact that potentially everybody is a journalist now is I think the fact that we do have citizens able to communicate in real time using social media platforms actually can work against a check on disinformation that may come out from governments. I mean, think about the war in Vietnam again. I mean, you had CBS News and morally safer that were on the ground there, that were, you know, videoing villages as they were being burned by American troops. Sometimes just because these villages are unfortunate enough to have gunshots being rang out nearby. And, you know, the American troops would then torch the villages. And CBS got that story back to the American people, that it's images like that, you know, that were true, that triggered the lack of support for that war that followed and the protest that followed. But imagine if we had some of today's social media platforms on the ground in Vietnam at that time when there was conflict between North and South Vietnam. You know, would the Americans even have intervened at that point in time the way they did? Or look at the Korean politics and Korean history, look at the Guangzhou uprising and how that was, that's, no, that's dirty laundry domestically here, but look at how that was suppressed by the Chung government after it happened. Would Guangzhou have even went down the way it did if we had today's technology? So citizen technology can also have the effect of suppressing or making it less likely that a government will resort to force. Now, the fact that a government is democratic as well in today's Korea being, you know, a full-scale liberal democracy is less likely to fall back in that direction in any case, we'd like to think. But the fact that we have the institutions coupled with the technology can curb that. So I'd say that's one way of looking at this. There are other ways, but I'll yield the floor back to my fellow panelists.
Great, great. Love to hear those specific examples of what we've seen and experienced in our world up to this point. Now, because we have about, I guess, about 20 minutes in this session, I want to focus now on, since, you know, something like this, a conference like this, is about basically making the world a better place. You know, we come together, we spend time, we travel here so that we can make something better, you know? So we want to touch now on how the global security cooperation framework perhaps could be designed or constituted so that we can deal with the kind of issues that we are grappling with right now in terms of disinformation in this day and age. Do we have any takers for this issue then? I mean, point being, global security cooperation. How can we cooperate? Ambassador Wolvan or? I don't know if we have mics ready, do we? No, but, yeah. Oh, well, yeah, please, but, you know, let's make our comments short. Would anybody like to comment on that issue? How we can build a global security cooperation framework so that we can deal with misinformation in this day and age? Well, I think, okay, falls back to our panel members. Yes, Ambassador Wolvan, yes. Yeah, we need some kind of framework, I think.
I mean, just very briefly to say, on the hybrid space, which includes disinformation, but which is much broader, as I mentioned in the outset, there are, at least within Europe, certain, there are certain centers of excellence, also within the NATO framework. We have, you know, we have a hybrid center that I believe is located also in Finland. So there's, this is, I would say, this is quite a nascent field when it comes to international cooperation. We need to do more of that, for sure. My initial take on this, which is a personal opinion, we need to cooperate broadly. We might find also that when it comes to certain of these issues, it is easier to start cooperation with like-minded, open, democratic countries. But it certainly shouldn't stop that, stop there. That's my initial take. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Associate Deputy Minister Beck? Yes, your take on how we could possibly build maybe a global security cooperation framework?
I'm reminded of work that we do within the Group of Seven initially. And I think you're right, it has to be expanded beyond the different parts of the multilateral system that are already working together. What the focus is on initially is identifying misinformation. First of all, where does it happen? When does it happen? Calling it out, attributing, who's doing this? Who's saying what they should not say? Is it, is it a state actor? Is it a non-state actor? Is it an algorithm? Is it, is it something that's programmed, that could be deprogrammed? Is it something that is a human activity? Usually it comes eventually from a human in one direction or another. But would a global rules-based framework make a difference? The trouble would always be on enforcement, right? And that would be, because, I mean, it's unethical, obviously, already, but that's a values-based judgment. And values are not necessarily the same around the planet. So if you're creating a framework that's based on mainly democratic values and privacy and personal opinions as well as what's important for the public good, how is that something that you can write down and encapsulate into one legal framework that can then be enforced? I think would be very difficult, certainly in a United Nations capacity. But within NATO, I think we're doing a good job. The G7 as well. I think the European Union has been working on issues like that. So there are ways of getting at aspects of it, but I think it would be tricky to do a global one. I will say, during the various crises in Canada, when we were trying to work on trust in government, at the very beginning of the pandemic, we found that openness and transparency made a big difference. Our leaders were out in front of the press taking questions every single day in the beginning. And the facts were getting out because there was a lot of room to have a conversation. And leaders were put on the spot and required to answer immediately. And they needed to have the facts at their fingerprints. That meant that there was less room for confusion and speculation. And I think we found that regularly, certainly me as a public servant, if we're dealing with a complex issue, we find it's easier to get a good story, and I don't mean positive, I mean, a factually correct story across, if we have regular interactions like this where the floor is open and you can ask whatever questions you like. And that means that the narrative in the end is correct and useful and does help countering disinformation.
As you said, it is indeed a daunting task. And although the issue of disinformation has been around for decades, the environment that we are in makes it, I think, much tougher to deal with. Dr. Cole, do you also think that this is a daunting task that will be really tough to handle?
Oh, no, actually, I don't. I think I am very, actually, optimistic about this. I think this, what's going on right now, it's more about, I think it's more about the crisis of confidence on the part of the liberal democracies. We take ourselves, you know, our good values for granted, which for sure, but at the same time, we don't really reaffirm those values to others because we think we are imposing our values on others. But I think it's about time that we do so. I think that there's a crisis of confidence. And we have created this impression, there's a false equivalency between democracy and authoritarianism, especially when it comes to delivering certain public goods. And I think, and also, we also don't really tout our success in delivering values and freedom and freedom of expression, which is very important. And I think it's something that we oftentimes don't, I mean, often underestimate is our strength in openness, transparency and inclusiveness. I think that's a really important aspect because, I mean, I'm not saying this because like I'm so proud I'm living in a liberal democracy and all that, but it's more about the efficiency of this system, of democratic system, by being inclusive, by being open, by being transparent. You are essentially creating a lot of built-in trust by all the members of the society. And with more trust, you actually have a more efficient social system and economic systems. So I'm very confident that if there's a really indeed race or say a competition between the authoritarian blog and the democratic blog, I think the outcome is foretained. I think we're going to win this. But for some reason, I think there's this impression that the authoritarian systems are more efficient. But I think that is actually the disinformation that we have to be careful about. And also, I want to add about the disinformation, more normal like a prosaic form of disinformation that, which is our topic of this session. I think when we talk about disinformation, we tend to think that disinformation is the problem. But I don't think so. Disinformation is just a symptom of underlying issues. We often, you know, like when, by just trying to control disinformation, I think we are also, in a way, it's going to be counterproductive and only lead to the explosion of even more disinformation. So in that sense, I think we have to underline, attack the underlying symptoms of disinformation. Oftentimes, this is actually a social crisis. And, I mean, it is very important, inequality, social crisis and lack of transparency. And then, I mean, and I would say openness in the political systems. This, I mean, oftentimes, disinformation is generated in political conflicts and political afflictions. So that's the reason why we have to have a very transparent political systems. And so the only reason why the authoritarian system seem to not to suffer from this kind of problems is because they are actually imposing a huge cost, a social cost and economic cost on their own system to streamline the propagation of information or control of information. And they want to lose out because that makes the system really inefficient. So I think what's most important is, you know, I think about getting, like, mind the states getting together should solve the purpose of reaffirming the superiority of the liberal democratic system.
Disinformation is a symptom and we need to get to the root of the problem, you're saying. Yes, I agree. Professor Shuttle, I want to ask you, yes, global security cooperation framework, fine. You know, we'll find our way somehow. But do you think citizens could take the initiative to come up with their own kind of framework to deal with this issue?
Oh, for sure. And I think if we come back to the question of framework, I definitely like the idea of security cooperation across governments and civil society organizations, businesses, citizens, universities even, to curb disinformation. I would caution, I think, against taking a structured top-down approach to this kind of problem. If framework implies something from the top down or something that's enforceable, even if it probably couldn't be enforced, then I think it won't really go anywhere. I think a top-down framework could end up being just an easy target for accusations could end up being just an easy target for accusations of government manipulation of public debate, or some sort of a downgrading of the free flow of information to the public. And, you know, there's a real challenge in curbing disinformation while at the same time maintaining a priority for freedom of speech. You know, it's like, you know, are you free? Of course, you're not free to shout "fire" in a crowded theater, and disinformation is somewhat akin to that. Yet, you know, countries want to err on the side of, you know, liberty, democracy, and democracy meaning the most open sense of the word in which the free flow of information and ideas will be paramount. Of course, the difficulty is if the ideas that are being shared are based on fraudulent information, then the decisions that flow from that information or flow from those preferences of the citizens are going to be compromised. So indeed, curbing disinformation is important. I would say bottom-up strategies are important on the part of parts of governments and on the parts of citizens. I mean, one bottom-up strategy is simply to facilitate the conditions for news reporters with integrity to do their jobs and provide honest and reliable information that the public needs to know. And, you know, we free societies with our endangered daily newspapers. There's some rethinking of the media landscape as well here. The business model that sustained the legacy media is not holding up. You know, the Junang Ilbo may survive, because you've got an owner with deep pockets. And, you know, the New York Times will survive, because they've got this paywall now that people around the world will buy into, and it keeps the coverage going. But, you know, you need reliable coverage in so many different levels. Branding helps, but what if the brand that people trust is not the New York Times, but it's Breitbart, or it's Fox? And I don't mean to slam those two, right, it sounds ideological, or MSNBC for that matter, which is somewhat skewed toward the left. So, you know, the source that the citizens turn to really does make a difference. And can citizens do a lot? Yes, they can. I mean, for one, citizens, we can really, citizens can do more to go, we can all go out of our way to look for competing points of view and competing perspectives in what we're reading. Because, not just for the sake of disinformation, but if we have a better sense on the myriad perspectives in our own communities, then it gives us the skills to separate, to weigh arguments and weigh information, and separate the legit from the bogus in other kinds of ways and in other kinds of stories. So cultivating those skills, even at the educational level, media literacy is now important as well, helping, you know, youngsters think for themselves, because they're the ones that are swimming in all of this. And they start swimming in all this technology sometimes before they really know how to vet what's legit and what's not. So there's a challenge for the educational arena as well. So surely, governments, the security cooperation that I have in mind would be more governments sharing best practices with each other and facilitating conditions for their citizens to be more truly informed. One thing that I think could work in terms of, say, even collaboration, that could cut across civil society arenas and government arenas, might be the development of a global index. We have indexes now around the world, run typically by NGOs, but with a lot of other collaboration. Freedom House has the Political Freedom Index every year, that's tracked every year. Transparency International, the NGO, has what's called a Corruption Perceptions Index. You know, listening to my colleagues on this panel, I'm beginning to wonder if we could use a Disinformation Perception Index, perhaps. Or at least, maybe there'd be another way of doing it, maybe just rating different countries or different news organizations, civil society organizations doing it. You'd have to have credible people behind this kind of NGO initiative. But a way in which you could track the extent that governments and perhaps news sources as well present accurate, and social media platforms are presenting accurate and comprehensive information to the public on security and defense matters, especially in periods of international tension and conflict. Basically measuring, among other things, the degrees in which national militaries and defense ministries align with truth and transparency. So there are some other annual indexes, indices that track political liberty and transparency that might be, the logic of those indices might be translatable into this arena of disinformation. And the index might be better done from a bottom-up civil society organization in a way to have global credibility. So it's just one candle to light here, instead of darkness to curse at the end of the session.
That is wonderful. I really love that idea. Thank you very much, Professor. We have about three minutes, I think, yeah. Can we take a couple of questions, maybe, from the audience? Yes. Could you please tell us who you are, and also who you'd like to answer the question?
My name is Don Kirk. I'm a journalist. It seems amazing to me that the word "North Korea" has not come up in this whole discussion, North Korean disinformation, and how we combat that versus other people's disinformation surrounding North Korea, nor has the word "China" come up in this discussion with its disinformation, if you regard it as such, surrounding Taiwan and other issues. I wonder if perhaps Professor Go, or Mr. Go, I should say, for instance, could comment on that. I'm sure you have some views, and maybe others' people as well.
Yes. Thank you for the question, Don. Thank you. Yes, please.
So, you know, I mean, it comes to disinformation, I mean, the North Korea in the context of disinformation, I think, I mean, the jury, I mean, in a way, North Korea is such a simple, not actually, not a most difficult of opponents in that sense, because the systemic difference between the two Koreas is so clear, and then it's very clear who's the winner. If there's been any systemic competition between the two Koreas, South Korea is definitely superior to North Korea. And that's the reason why the North Korean social propaganda doesn't have a much of a leg here in the South. So I think, I mean, personally, I'm not so much concerned about North Korean propaganda, and I think this confidence is shared by others, especially with the current South Korean administration, which is planning to open up the South Korean media space to, you know, to allow broadcast of North Korean media into the country. So it's definitely a demonstration that South Korea has overwhelming superiority over the North. So I'm not concerned about North Korea anymore. But then I'm concerned about, well, China, since you want to mention China, I'll mention it. So, and then the reason, I mean, I think that China has not really done much of a, you know, hasn't really conducted overt disinformation campaign against the South. But then, along with other authoritarian regimes, it's something that we have to be aware of, and then we have to be watching out. But again, I think, I think South Korea is different from other countries. I mean, I don't want to provide a cultural explanation why we are different, but then, I think, in a way, this is a kind of ironic, you know, result of years of, I would say, training during the Cold War, when Korea, South Korea was really feeling vulnerable back then by North Korean propaganda. And then there's been an entire period where the Korean people were subject to, I think that Imran Khodari is, you know, putting a similar idea with the bomb book. So being trained to and got used to recognizing propaganda from real information. I think that legacy continues on, but has been transformed in a positive way, because I think South Koreans are more, I mean, on average, more capable of separating propaganda from misinformation. But this doesn't mean that we are perfect. We know that when we remove information from this political context of communism versus like, you know, democracy, or like, North Korea versus South Korea, South Korea is again, South Korean public is vulnerable again to misinformation. We have seen this back in 2008 with the major public protests against the resumption of American beef, because there have been rumors circulating about American beef being infected with MERS disease, which was not true. So, but then people, you know, went out to the street and staged huge protests against the import of American beef. So clearly, in some contexts, South Koreans are more robust to misinformation and disinformation, but in some contexts we are not. But then luckily, in the present context of political disinformation, I think that South Korea is more capable than other countries.
Thank you for that question and the answer. Professor Shuttle, you have a point to make?
Yeah, sure. I'll just add something. Thanks very much, Don, for the question. And, you know, definitely fair game to have China and North Korea in here. The way I think about it from the context of this panel, I think a lot about North Korean propaganda is just so in-your-face, and the source of it is so easy to detect. We all know that it comes from the central government. Usually, their stamp is right on it, you know, that it's, you know, they leave a return address on their propaganda. So if you think back to the video that they made that was flaunting their weapons capabilities, at one point, they had this propaganda video that showed a missile coming into the Blue House here in Seoul, which wasn't until recently the presidential office. And their video showed the missile going in, showed the Blue House splitting evenly in half, like this, you know, kind of symmetrically, like at 45-degree angles, just too good to be true. So how can you take something like that seriously? Now, I don't want to say that North Korea doesn't have any insidious ways of doing propaganda, but I think what we're worrying about in, at this day and age, a lot of times is the more insidious forms of propaganda from wherever they're coming from, and they often originate inside democracies as well as inside dictatorships, that can be harder to detect. And of course, the real problem for North Korea is the biggest victims of North Korean propaganda are the people living there, the people that are in the society itself, you know, kind of conditioned to buy into the sort of reasons that the North Korean regimes has justified their existence to them for such a long period of time, and justifications internally in North Korea that are not even true. Brian Myers' book, The Cleanest Race, I think, does a really good job in uncovering that. So yes, it's problematic, but at least for those of us living outside North Korea, it's easy for us to call it out and take it on.
Yes, absolutely. I agree. So I think we kind of wrote North Korea off of this panel, but thank you. Very great points there. We are already out of time, but we do have a lady in the back who'd like to ask you a question. Please keep your question concise, and the answer will have to be quite concise as well. Thank you. Could you tell us who you are first?
Sure. Thank you very much for what is a brilliant panel and very rich discussion. My name is Cecile Laptel, and I'm with the United Nations Institute on Disarmament Research. A quick comment, if I may, and then my question. The quick comment is to say that the United Nations has been working on these issues for some time. And there is, in fact, a General Assembly resolution on information technologies in the context of international security that proposed 11 principles. One of them is that states must recommit to preventing the misuse of ICTs in their own territories, on their own territories. And I think that's an important principle in terms of also states' responsibility in monitoring the activities, including by companies, individuals on their own territory. My question is that you have referred to democratic values and fundamental values and democratic principles. There's been several mention of the right to privacy, but of course, the issues of misinformation also impact freedom of expression, freedom of opinion. So it really goes to the core of democracy. How do you see the resilience of democratic principles and really the respect for human rights as also playing a key part in moving forward on this conversation? Because at the end of the day, isn't that a balancing exercise between security and these freedoms? Thank you.
Would you like a particular member of the panel to address that question, or?
Maybe the ones next to you?
Yes, please. I believe, yes, I believe the Associate Deputy Minister is the right person to answer that question. Yes.
I don't think so. And it's true, and of course, that is really the fundamental issue, is how do we convey and globalize what we think are the most important values, right? And it is a balancing act, we talked about this a bit earlier, between freedom of speech, and even, in fact, while I was talking, when I was, how you, because it's not about controlling the messaging, and yet it is, right? It's making sure that the facts speak for themselves. But in an era where facts are considered fungible, where there has been already discussion about, well, that's your fact, but I have an alternative fact, that, I think, is the scariest part. So how do you create an atmosphere, an agreed set of circumstances whereby facts, the truth, is essential to the discussion? And that's kind of the basic, the beginning of everything, the foundation of everything, is that we all agree this color is this color, and this color is this color, and there is no gray. And that's very difficult in a global world with the kinds of conversations that we're having. And where the phrase in English is "where you sit is where you stand," right? And I think that's very true in the kind of conversation that we're having today. Notwithstanding the impacts of misinformation and frankly bald-faced lies, we're not even talking about, oh, I misspoke, because what your journalist at the back was referring to, those are just straight-up lies. It's not people thinking, maybe I'm confused and I'm getting the message wrong. I think there's a difference between that, too, and just some confusion and trying to explain something and not being very clear about it like I am right now. But going forward, how do we get global agreement on what's important? I think that is the difficult part. But as a basic fundamental human right, to actually have the truth from your government and to be protected from misinformation, it's not on our current list of human rights, but it's kind of basic that you're not getting lied to by your own government, you know? And if that means what I referred to earlier is more openness, more transparency, more discussions like this one that we're having now, and more clarity between people, then that can only be a good thing. So good luck in the UN General Assembly on that.
Yes, very good to hear that the UN is already on this. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will have to wrap up this session. We are over time, but thank you very much to our wonderful panel members for helping us explore and, you know, identify this issue and where we might be able to take this in the future. And thank you to all of you for staying until the very end of this session. Thank you very much, and enjoy the rest of the Seoul Defense Dialogue. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, a big round of applause. Yes, thank you very much. Yes, thank you, moderator and panelists, for shedding light on such important matters. Thank you once again. And now, ladies and gentlemen, this concludes session two. It looks like we can use a short break to cool things off a bit. But in the meantime, if you look in front of your desk, there will be a survey sheet. So if you fill it out and return it to the registration desk on the second floor, your comments will be greatly appreciated. And now, our special session four will be starting quite late, a little bit later, as we have to schedule it with the next door. So as soon as we will know, we will inform you as quickly as we can. So please enjoy your break, and thank you very much. So please enjoy your break and thank you very much.
A用マイクをテストします。A用マイクをテストします。1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3. A用マイクをテストします。1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3. A用マイクをテストします。1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention, please? The special session four of the Seoul Defense Dialogue 2022 will be starting in about five minutes, so we kindly ask all participants to please proceed inside and take your seats. Now, also, as a favor to all, please refrain from using your mobile phones and switch them on to silent mode for smooth process. Now, according to our COVID-19 preventive guidelines, we ask you to wear your face mask at all times while you are in the conference room. Now, also, simultaneous interpretation service is provided throughout this event, so please switch on to channel five for English and channel six for Korean. And lastly, the Seoul Defense Dialogue 2022 is currently being streamed online on YouTube. So once again, to our guests outside, we'll be starting in about five minutes, so please proceed inside and take your seats. Thank you. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to special session four of the Seoul Defense Dialogue 2022. Once again, simultaneous interpretation service is provided throughout this event, so please switch on to channel five for English and channel six for Korean. Now, also, the Seoul Defense Dialogue 2022 is currently being streamed live on YouTube, so for those of you watching online, we look forward to your active participation. So with that, let us begin special session four, held under the theme "Foundation for Strong Defense Cooperation: Building Capacity for Defense Acquisition and ONS System." Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce you to our moderator for this session. Please welcome Jun Su Park, Senior Research Fellow of Korea Institute for Defense Analysis. Please welcome him with a big round of applause.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the special session four. As you see in the program book, the title of the session is very complicated, isn't it? Someone said it's stimulatingly complicated, so I will explain the basic ideas of the title somewhat later. I'm Jun Su Park from the Korea Institute for Defense Analysis, and I'm the moderator of this session. Very nice to meet you all and thank you for joining us. First, I announce that in the first part of this session will be introduction of panelists, and I will talk in the English, but in the second part, the conversation, I will talk in the Korean, because by rule of large numbers, we have more Koreans than foreign panelists. I'm just kidding. So it's more, thank you. It's more comfortable to make a conversation in Korean in the audiences, so I'm asking for understanding for that. So let me introduce our honorable panelist. And left side of me, we invited Mr. Chin Hong Kim. He is the Director General of Defense Industrial Promotion Bureau of Korean Defense Acquisition Program Administration. He's the former executive officer of Financial Services Group Commission, and he also had a position in the presidential office. Mr. Kim, please, short greetings to the audience, please.
Hello, it is a pleasure to meet you. I've just been introduced. My name is Chin Hong Kim, and today at this special session, it is a great honor for me to be here at this Seoul Defense Dialogue, and I hope that this is going to be a valuable forum for exchange of insights.
And on the right side of the screen, we had invited Dr. Woo Young. He's in the Asan Institute for Policy Studies. He holds a PhD degree in military strategy, and he's a member of Advisory Committee of Korean Armed Forces. Dr. Young, please, short greetings to the audience.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for inviting me this prestigious Seoul Defense Dialogue. Well, I think that, actually, I did a lot of research on North Korean weapon systems, so actually, well, maybe defense industry is not my expertise, but still, I do a lot of comments for the medias and policymakers, so maybe I can share a little bit of insight with you guys. Yeah, well, thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen.
Dr. Young, I know that you are all-round researcher, so don't worry about that. And finally, we invited Dr. Hae Koo Bojse. He holds a PhD degree in international relations and security studies. Also, he's the managing director of Global Defense Policy Consulting Group. He's the CEO of Bojse Consulting and Research. He's also a senior research fellow at the German Institute for Defense and Strategic Studies. Dr. Hae Koo, you are alone, foreign panelist, so it seems that you are representative of the whole world. So how about you?
You know, being along among friends is just half the burden, half the burden. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a true pleasure being back. I had the honor of attending the first inaugural 2012 Seoul Defense Dialogue, so being back after 11 years is really a pleasure, and I look forward to a stimulating discussion among the panel, and as we are only three, there might be more time to also involve the audience in our discussion. Thank you.
Yeah. He said, Dr. Bojse said, we have a better kind of mini lateral talk, conversation, actually bilateral conversation. So thank you for our honorable panelists, and I'm really happy to have you in this session. So now, I will do a short briefing of this session. As you see in the program book, the titles are so very complicated. Let me introduce the basic idea of this session. As you, as we all know, any country does not have sufficient resources to fulfill its needs. to fulfill its needs of defense capability building. Because we're facing a very challenging security environment and a rapidly sweeping technology revolution. So naturally, the cooperation is required. And then, cooperation should be mutually beneficial for each country. We have many different channels of defense cooperation. You know, that military exercise and consultative meetings and training and education, et cetera. But we'll focus on the acquisition and industrial domain because it's a very substantial area. It has economic and industrial interests as well as military and political interest. So if we have more understanding about the background and practices and lessons learned of each countries for developing their acquisition systems, we can do better to promote the future promising cooperation. So I understand that today we have more fruitful conversation, I expect for that. Okay, we are ready to start the conversation. We have five topics in total, but we don't have much time. We have to wrap up in one hour. So I'm gonna make some group of the topics. Topic one and two goes to Group One, and topic four and five goes to Group Three. So and then each panelist can answer to each group of questions. And when we are available for time, I will make follow-up questions to each panelist. So let's start, and I talk in Korean. Please, apologies, please, asking for understanding.
So I'm going to proceed in Korean. Thank you very much for your understanding. So let's now begin the discussion of the first question. I'd like to begin with a discussion of history. We are trying to talk about defense cooperation, but before talking about cooperation, we need to understand the background and the history so that we have a better understanding of where we need to focus on. So now let's talk about this first topic. I'd like to listen to the Korean panelists first, particularly Director General Kim. What do you think about past history?
I would like to take this opportunity to tell you a little bit about the process by which Korea was able to improve its defense acquisition system and our direction forward for our development of the defense acquisition system. Korea was a very poor country, but we are very proud of the fact that we were able to develop our defense acquisition system. And we would like to take this opportunity to share our insight with everyone here. In the 1970s, at the time, Korea was war-torn and it, for the first time, decided to promote in earnest policies to promote and develop the defense industry and our defense acquisitions. And that is how we came to install the ADD or the Agency for Defense Development. It's an R&amp;D organizational weapon system. And we also legislated relevant laws to try to form an institutional base. At the time, our defense contractors and defense industry was very nascent. We were not able to effectively make use of the resources at the time. So that is why we tried to remedy the situation with the relevant institutions and laws. In the 1980s, however, we strengthened our efforts. We had more massive R&amp;D projects. We had the K-1A1 armored tank, the K-9 Howitzer, the KT-1 basic training aircraft. These were all promoted in the 1980s. And in the 2000s, we also instituted massive acquisitions reform. So this was a time of reform of our defense acquisitions. And this is around the time, early 2000s, when DAPA, the Defense Acquisitions Program Administration, was first installed. Because around this time, the different functions of DAPA were implemented by many different organizations and agencies within the governments. But this was all integrated into one organization, the DAPA. And then in 2020, with the rise of new technologies such as the Fourth Industrial Revolution technologies, we wanted to rapidly and flexibly integrate them into the defense sector and to support systematically the defense industry as a whole. This is one of the core missions for the defense industry currently. That is why we legislated the Act on Defense Science and Technology Innovation and the Act on Development of Defense Industry to try to allow for rapid defense acquisitions. And with the rise of AI and new technologies in the Fourth Industrial Revolution era, we wanted to make sure that we can implement these technologies in the futuristic warfare. And for that, we are currently implementing the Defense Reform 4.0. By way of conclusion, I can say that in defense acquisitions, perhaps the most important thing is that there are these rapid changes in the environments around us, and we have to quickly catch up to those changes in the environment and make sure that our defense acquisitions and defense industry will evolve as such. I'm sure that other countries are doing the same as what we are doing here in Korea. And that is why we have to work together to coordinate and cooperate our responses. Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Kim, for your response. As you just briefly told us, the defense industry in Korea developed over the years. I know that defense acquisition system is very dynamic. And in fact, in Korea, we saw very practical changes and developments with the defense acquisition. You only touched upon a select few of the legislations and the laws and the institutions, but I understand that there was a lot of dynamic evolutions with defense acquisitions. And that is why we were able to see more exports in the defense sector from Korea. Next, I'd like to turn to Dr. Yang for his intervention.
Inside with him, so I'll be in English, right? Yeah. Yeah, well. So English region and Korean region, okay?
Yeah. The recent development of defense industry in Korea is as rapid as our other industry, I mean, in general. Defense sales, which barely exceed $3 billion annually, but last year, it was like $7 billion. And this year, it is expected to reach like $10 billion US dollar. This achievement was not made overnight, I mean, as he explained. Until 1980s, the core weapon systems are imported. But I mean, after the 1990s and 2000s, they started making their own. I mean, it still lacks the performance. And I mean, they didn't know where to start, but they put it out, I mean, as, you know, Korean. I mean, we did put it out like in other industry. So I mean, above all, the existence of the North Korean threat, I mean, justified everything. Surprisingly, the defense industry, I mean, we always needed the help from the United States because they are the only ally the Korea has. But I mean, interestingly, I mean, US was a really good teacher, but I mean, in some sense, they were obstacle to overcome. Because I mean, when we were to acquire the core system, we have to rely on to the United States. Well, I mean, for that, I mean, our domestic defense company, I mean, they really had a limitation because of this imports. So I mean, when we are trying to make it our own, I mean, we need every help we have. I mean, well, mostly from the European countries. But I mean, interestingly, we got even help from the Russians. Let's say, I mean, the system like Chonggung II, I mean, the kind of like a Korean Patriot defense system. Or I mean, we had a Hyeonmu II. It's kind of like a ballistic missile, which really, really resembles the Iskander, the Russian ballistic missile. The things that... Sorry. And then the... You see, there's a recent development in Korean defense export, I mean, the export to Poland, right? I mean, that's the example of the Koreans' unique defense industrial capability. The customer country must first import weapons to put them into the frontline. And then, you know, they need to produce the rest of the equipments in their own country, like from the licensed production. So I think there are not many countries in the world that can meet these kind of demands. Well, in particular, like getting, like, let's say, hundreds of tanks to the other country in two, three years. I mean, it's a really big challenge. I think that that's why the Korean defense industry is getting attention. But you know, weapon systems are only as good as their manufacturers. The production of the advanced weapon system is possible because of them. I mean, only when you have that kind of industrial base. I mean, if your technology is not good enough, I mean, you cannot make it. But I mean, the most important thing is that the weapon system is only good as its operation. So I mean, I think that also we should export our defense system, not just weapon, one weapon. I mean, we are exporting how to fight, I mean, how to defend your countries. So I mean, for us to do that, I mean, we have to understand these customer countries' unique security challenges. So I mean, that's what we should try. And I mean, Korea is doing fine, but I mean, we're gonna do better. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yang, for even the somewhat strategic and tactical kind of perspectives. You've said some very important points. You said that Korea's defense industry, the industrial base or the drive, was really because of North Korea. As you said, the North Korean threat is always there. That is why for about 30, 40 years, we were able to throw ourselves into research and development because there was that ever-present North Korean presence there. And another thing that you pointed on is our speed of marketing and our skill of marketing compared to any other country in the world. I think that we are very speedy when it comes to marketing our competent products. And that is why going forward, we can also improve on this in terms of interoperability. And that was helpful for me in terms of learning from you, and I think that this was helpful for the floor as well. I'd like to turn to Dr. Borshe.
Yes, many, many thanks. Before we look a bit more into the details of the first question, let me perhaps start with two observations following what you said, that you have to understand the strategic challenges your partner is facing. And I would like to start with two observations that also reflect a bit on the discussion we had in the morning and also yesterday. Observation number one, when we talk about an increasingly contested geostrategic environment, in fact, we talk about the return of peer-to-peer conflicts. And when we talk about peer-to-peer conflicts, we also need to address the readjustment of defense capabilities of a nation. I mean, this is an obvious case over here. Looking at the most recent European history, the return of war on the political agenda took some people by surprise. So you really have to understand where your partner is coming from. But the second observation might perhaps be more a surprise for you because I think with all the geostrategic challenges, the ultimate challenge is geo-economic. And geo-economics is about the use of economic instruments for political goals. The more the defense establishment of your country looks into new technologies, you already referred to them, Defense Reform 4.0. The more you look into artificial intelligence, the more you look into the use of unmanned systems, the more you look into quantum, the more you look into exactly those type of technologies that are at the heart of today's geo-economic competition. So I would like to raise your awareness for a potential geo-economic Achilles heel that your national defense system might have. And why is that important? If we look at the current war of aggression of Russia against Ukraine, a kind of real-time history, I think there are some important preliminary lessons to be learned for international defense cooperation. I think lesson number one, what matters in Ukraine is ramping up your production capacity extremely quickly. I guess you all followed the news reports with the CEO of Raytheon or the CEOs of Lockheed Martin saying, “We are relatively quickly depleting all our stocks. We deliver Javelin, we deliver Stinger, but we quickly deplete our stocks, and refilling our stocks might take 12, 18, 24 months.” So production capacity versus long-term defense cooperation, that's a trade-off. And you need to make a choice with your partner where you want to be in that game. If you look at Javelin and Stinger as two examples, I think there's a second lesson that will be increasingly important for defense cooperation. And that's the question of how you provide critical defense equipment components to your partner. You might have been following the news with regard to the question also of forward deploying defense industrial assets into war zones. Because I think that's the third aspect you need to keep in mind. We are all used to talk about military interoperability. But in a geo-economic environment, the key question is industrial interoperability. And the key question is whether you can uphold your critical supply chains. And you have to look into defense critical supply chains. And you might want to, if you talk about the really strategic partnership, or you might want to come to an agreement with your partner, what kind of products might be shuffled from country A to country B in order to uphold your defense production capability? Because in the end, you need that stuff on the battlefield, and you must be able to ramp up that capacity, if we go back to the first lesson. And the fourth lesson might perhaps be a bit of a surprise, but I would strongly encourage you not only to look into so-called greenfield technologies. Don't always start on the famous white sheet of paper. Try to embrace brownfield defense innovation. Look into how you can use modern technology to augment your existing systems. Because the big challenge today is only because new technology is available, it doesn't mean that new technology will also be applied by armed forces. That's a big cultural process of adaptation and adoption. That's a big cultural process of adaptation and adaptation. But when we talk about brownfield innovation, we talk about augmenting the capabilities of defense solutions that your armed forces are already aware of. That's your point. Weapon systems and the success of weapon system depends on the operator. So if the operator already understands the system, but you augment it with unmanned technology, with artificial intelligence, you might create a level of surprise vis-à-vis your adversary that is unexpected. And surprise turns the initiative towards your benefit and not to the benefit of the adversary.
Thank you, Dr. Borshet.
I think you've took the words out of my mouth. You said everything that I was about to say because you gave the opening remark as well as the concluding remark. So it seems that we don't have to continue on with the discussion anymore. Please give a warm applause to Dr. Borshet, please. I was quite moved, particularly when you said the industrial interoperability is very important. So interoperability of the production is key. And also, you mentioned that technology is not the end-all and be-all. You have to consider the economic situation, political situation that your partner country is in right now. And the g-economic aspects have to be considered also. Lastly, you also talked about the brownfield innovations that is necessary. We know, knew about that, but you are very specific in explaining that to us. So, if, if we think about innovation, it doesn't all have to be greenfield. So we can begin in areas where we already have certain capabilities. So now, I'm about to ask a question to you, but all of these things that the panelists have mentioned are challenges for Korea. Particularly, in the case of Europe, they, they have the NATO. So they have a collective security system already in place, which is quite different from the situation in Korea. Korea has to survive on its own in this complex neighborhood, in the complex circumstance. So the situation isn't very favorable to us right now. We have a country surrounding us that we don't necessarily have good relationship with. However, in NATO, among NATO members, among the European countries, isn't it much easier for you to collaborate? So, the supply chain cooperation, geo-economic political cooperation in NATO and in EU, what do you think is the current situation right now?
With all due respect and reaching out to other Europeans in the audience, don't forget, NATO doesn't build defense solutions. The EU doesn't build defense solutions. Not even the nation-states build defense solutions. It's the corporate defense industry that builds the solutions. So, I think this is where problems start. Is it easy in Europe to cooperate these days? I mean, it really depends on whom you're talking to. The European Commission's most recent drive with the European Defense Fund has a particular emphasis on breaking up existing supply chains in order to integrate smaller nations into the supply chains of the big OEMs. Well, you know, in the end, that's, you can politically agree on doing this, but in the end, it's an economic issue. Because all of a sudden, you need to trust partners that you don't know. All of a sudden, you enlarge a consortium. And this is why we said at the beginning, that's more or less a bilateral talk because defense cooperation on a bilateral basis is easy. Defense cooperation on a multilateral basis. Although we no longer talk about Just Retour, so every country that contributes to a project wants to have the same offset, quote-unquote, in its national economy again. This is, this is, this is boo now in Brussels, but unofficially, it still occurs. So I think even because you have NATO and because you have the European Union, and by the way, the two don't really talk to each other. They might talk to each other at the political level, but at the working level, there is, there's quite some rivalry going on with the European Defense Fund and the Diana, the Defense Innovation Network of the North Atlantic Community and the NATO Investment Fund. So, you might, you might envy the Europeans for the institutional framework they have. But still, it's, it's national governments that need to agree on joint areas of interests. And if you're not able to align a political interest in defense cooperation with an industrial interest in defense cooperation, it's going to be a hell lot difficult. Even when you look at the German-Franco cooperation, where you would say, "Well, this is an extremely, the deep bilateral cooperation", it's not going well. It's not going well because you have that potential decoupling between political rhetoric and industrial reality. So my, my suggestion would be always take into account the tensions between political interests and industrial interests.
Thank you. That was a question that I did not give you a heads-up on, but that was an excellent answer. So thank you very much. This may be a sort of a sensitive statement coming out from me, but as you know, I mean, there's collaboration. We're collaborating with Poland right now. And so the interest is expanding to the NATO region in terms of defense cooperation. But as it was just mentioned, in NATO, this collective security framework is not doing the defense industry cooperation directly. So it's doing what it can in the political sphere. And also, you mentioned that the B-to-B and the business-to-business or country-to-country cooperation is quite different from a multilateral defense cooperation. And the different kinds of conflicts may exist among the different cooperative frameworks. And so we are trying to cooperate a lot with European market. And so there has to be some differentiated approach depending on the partner country and depending on the partner subregions. And so we, those are very helpful remarks for Korea. And so Dr. Borshet also mentioned briefly about the direction that Korea's defense industry should be taking as well as the current limitations. And now, let me turn my, turn my attention to the Korean panelists on the achievements of our defense industry cooperation to date and what are the limitations that still exist. So first, Dr. Uk Yang.
Well, I mean, for Korea, I mean, I don't think that we have that much of experience with the, you know, industrial cooperation. I mean, it's, I'm mostly about, you know, licensed manufacturing. And then, maybe, I mean, I mean, the, the one thing is kind of like, you know, recent KF-21 with the Bora May, with, I mean, which is, you know, supposed to be made with the Indonesia. But the things that, I mean, the cooperation is not working very well. Yeah. The things that I, well, I, well, maybe, maybe I'm too, you know, narrow-minded, but the things that, things like this. Maybe, I mean, we are waging war depending, trying to depending democracy. The world is not a democracy and military is not a democracy. I mean, I mean, you need a really, really powerful leadership, you know, to get some system get going. So, maybe, I mean, I mean, if he, the, the things like this. For KF-21, I mean, if we are trying to do, want to do some, you know, democratic description, it would have never made. Yeah. So, so, I mean, I think that, that for, I mean, the cooperation is only possible when the country had, you know, well, really clear vision. And, I mean, the, those visions of, you know, the countries are, you know, were kind of like, I mean, gathered and focused then. Only then, I mean, it is, it is possible. Like, let's say, I mean, the old, the, you know, defense corporation like, like, let's say, you know, any, you know, international fighter plane that, you know, that really succeed well? I mean, maybe, maybe like back in, you know, Panavia Tornado or something like that? Well, I mean, I didn't see the recent, you know, accomplishments. Like, let's say, you know, F-35 is like, they said it's an international program, but is it? Actually, actually, I don't think so. Actually, the, maybe the, some of the component is made by, you know, the partner countries, but it's not. So, so I think that, that, I mean, since the weapon is for the competition, not for the cooperation, so basically, I, I, I'm, I'm really pessimistic about cooperation. Sorry.
Yes, when it comes to competition and cooperation, as you said, that there is always going to be this conflict between the two. And for that, I'm going to turn to some of our panelists later on for the conclusion. But I, I think that now we are turning to some of the other questions here. I'm going to ask Dr. Kim for a kind of summary of what he thinks.
It's related to what has been said. I think that countries can engage in defense cooperation in certain areas, that we can identify some areas for cooperation together. And I think it's important that we try to work together on identifying those areas for cooperation. Earlier on, Dr. Borshet talked about how geo-economic factors are very important and how political factors are important. I completely agree with that statement. I think that countries can be in completely different contexts. If you're a low-income country, you don't have access to capital, you don't have access to technology, you don't have access to many different resources, you cannot purchase expensive advanced weapon systems, you cannot develop them yourselves. If you're a middle-income country, maybe you can export mid-class weapon systems, but perhaps you are challenged from advancing your own localization of your technologies. If you are a very opulent advanced economy, even if that is the case, you cannot develop all of the weapon systems that exist out there in the world. You cannot do that with all of the conventional weaponry. You, there is always going to be a difference in opinion. There is always going to be a difference in our environment. So that is why there is going to be a match between some countries' needs and what other countries can deliver. So that is why we have to identify and we can identify those certain points of cooperation. And to that extent, I wanted to introduce our offset programs, which is something that we are working on here at DAPA. So for example, this is where it's, we're directing some of the benefits back to the local industry for purchases of weapon systems from overseas. So perhaps maybe some of the parts can be sourced by SMEs in your country. Or maybe some of the technologies in the weapon system can be transferred over to our country. So this is the offset that we are asking for, for these weapons purchases. If you do not have access to a lot of technology, they can engage in these offset programs to get access to the defense technologies, advanced defense technologies. So this is a kind of mutually reciprocal relationship. And of course, however, some countries are very hesitant to engaging in technology transfer. So that is why the offset programs have been criticized. They've come under attack recently, and that is true. It's, it's had some difficulties. So that's why in Korea, we try to change around the paradigm for the offset program. And we try to look at it from the point of view of mutual cooperation, kind of a win-win cooperation. And within this context, even before we can have weapons exports, we can engage in prior cooperation. So we're, we're kind of building confidence and building trust with one another even before we enter into the export contract. Or maybe even in the process of entering and negotiating the contracts, we can talk about how we can have technology cooperation so that the focus is not too much on the actual offsets. Or maybe the tech transfer can be done in such a way that it's frictionless. So there are different ways where we can identify different areas for cooperation. Many sophisticated nuanced areas for cooperation when it comes to a defense cooperation between different countries. Going forward, I'm going to a different topic here. But when it comes to cyber warfare, international cooperation is going to be so important going forward. There's going to be new elements that we don't know right now where we need to engage in cooperation. And this is where countries can engage in cooperation, putting aside our individual interests and try to come together for the sake of mutual benefit. I, I think that this is some, something where we can really work on together.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kim, for your remarks. I think that the offset program that you mentioned is also a form of supply chain cooperation, I think. And Korea is one of those countries that have really developed its offset programs. I think that many countries around the world would like to learn more about Korea's offset programs and monitor the programs. For the offsets, of course, we also have to better understand what advanced economies are doing. I think that offset programs are not just about, you know, give or take, but rather, it's about reciprocity, that the reciprocal relations is really something that we have to focus on. And I know that European countries are doing this very well. So I want to turn to Dr. Borshet for your thoughts on whether it be offset programs or other different kinds of reciprocal supply chain cooperation in Europe. Can you let us know more?
Officially, inside Europe, there is no longer any offset policy. There is the Code of Conduct, signed by most participating states of the European Defense Agency. And inside Europe, there is no longer any offset. Still, there is defense industrial participation. So, I mean, it's, it's a question of how you frame the same topic. I think that the challenge, listening to both what, what my Korean fellow panelists said, I think the tension that arises is, is twofold. When you talk to, just as a footnote, when you talk to a real estate manager, "What are your key factors of success?" He says, "Location, location, location." If you translate that into defense industrial cooperation, these days, digitalization, as you said, is all about leeway, leeway, leeway. Now, you want to enlarge your strategic freedom of maneuver. That's why you invest in building up a national defense industrial base. And here comes the tension. As you rightly said, there are different levels of maturity against which you might want to define your defense industrial level of ambition. In the South Korean case, where you have a very powerful commercial industry, your offset model might look completely different. Because you can reach out to non-defense companies also as part of your offset agreement. And I think when you look at the history of South Korea's offset program, it's no coincidence that the Turkish offset program and the South Korean offset program really look very similar. Because these are two nations that really use offset for economic development, not only defense industrial development. And this, I think, is where, where the second tension comes in. And you rightly said, there are some defense partners that are reluctant to share technology. Yeah, for obvious reasons. Because we talk about your competitive edge. And are you willing to share technology with a nation that is going to be your future competitor? I mean, looking at South Korea from a German perspective, now wearing my German glasses, I would say, at least on the submarine case, this has been extremely touchy. No? Sharing technology which then ends up in a third market that you would have wanted to supply first by yourself. I think that's the kind of discussion every emerging defense player needs to solve for itself and also together with its partners. Because in the end, I think, you, you don't build up a national defense industry only to meet your domestic demand. Honestly, everybody wants to export. Honestly, everybody wants to export, no? But if you export products that have been co-developed with another partner, you must make sure that your strategic visions align, because otherwise, you end up with a product that you have co-developed, but you can't export it because you have a partner that says, by the way, the engine is my engine, and you're not going to supply Azerbaijan, and then you end up in a problem, no? As Turkey had with German engines, then tried to reach out to South Korea, didn't really work. But I think that's the kind of issue you, you need to address with your partners right from the start. Final remark, because I think we need to be extremely explicit on the reasons why we cooperate. You can cooperate to share costs, fair enough. You can cooperate to, to build up a long-term strategic partnership, where we talk about R and D, joint production, joint MRO, all good. But you can also cooperate with a partner to circumvent the export regulation of somebody else. Well, that's the reason why, for example, Israeli technology and South African technology is, is quite popular in certain regions, because you circumvent ITAR and you circumvent the export rules of, of some European nations. But all of that needs to be in the, on the table right from the start, because these are these nitty-gritty details that all of a sudden create an enormous problem, because in the end, you're spending taxpayers' money. And I think the more straightforward you are at the beginning of your cooperation in, in clearly laying these issues on the table, and also, as you rightly said, with regard to the product portfolio, what is the product portfolio that you want to offer on an export market? Is it just Me Too, another fighter, another tank, another unmanned system? Or is it something really special that nobody else offers because it blends into the way you fight wars, because it represents your culture, your doctrine? Two question marks. I don't have an easy answer, but I think these are the questions that you need to address with your partners once you want to enter defense cooperation.
Thank you so much. Dr. Borschert, I think you have to be an advisor to our defense industrial export in the future here in Korea. So when we hope to go into overseas defense industry markets, or when you're considering defense cooperation with other countries in the future, those are very good points that we need to always remember. So added to what Dr. Borschert has mentioned, maybe the Korean panelists could also share with us what Korea should be doing, particularly Director Kim.
Yes, thank you for the intervention. When it comes to defense cooperation, whether it be acquisition or industrial development, I think that in theory, it could sound like something that can be done, that it's easy, but when you come down to the details, it cannot, it's certainly not the case. I think that you, I illustrated that with offset programs, and as Dr. Borschert has said, there needs to be a way for us to try to approach strategically in many of these different areas. And in that process, we have to continuously identify those areas for cooperation so that we can find those areas where they can allow for maximal benefits for both sides, for both parties. In the global market right now, when it comes to components or materials or commodities, there is a huge shortage of supply right now, and that is why there's, the global supply chain is being, you know, restructured. And now people are relying on friendly, like-minded countries, and people are cutting off ties with countries that are not like-minded with you, or maybe scaling back your cooperation with those kinds of countries that are not like-minded with you. And instead, you are trying to work together more with like-minded countries, not just it comes with finished products, finished weapon systems, but early on in the supply chain process. So we are seeing this shift, and that's the current situation right now when it comes to international politics. The Korean government is also trying to identify ways where we could do the same thing. And when it comes to supply chain management, for raw materials or commodities, we're trying to identify what we need to do for stockpiling, or maybe some things, we have to diversify the supply sources, or maybe for some other things, we can localize the production. And so we're trying to come up with different strategies depending on what component or what raw material it is, and I think other countries are doing the same thing. And we're trying to work on a burden-sharing kind of situation, a division of labor kind of situation with different other like-minded countries, so that we can have stable access to defense systems. And also, even with MROs, with maintenance and repair, there are definitely areas for cooperation. Lastly, I just want to end with one thing. Somebody said that, let's say, Country A is selling smartphones to Country B, and that kind of cooperation is important, but when it comes to armored trucks, or tanks, or fighter jets, yes? Selling fighter jets, armored tanks, that is based on a blood alliance. And the components or the parts that go in there, they have to be constantly going through maintenance and repair. That means you are trusting the other country for that maintenance and constant repair. That means you're emotionally relying on that other country. So you are, you are like brothers. This is not just about a customer kind of client relationship, this is a much more significant relationship. So that is why we have to work on more areas for cooperation. Thank you. Thank you very much, Director Kim, for your remarks. We're going to build on what you've said just now, and because you've talked about these very significant relations when it comes to defense cooperation, because if you don't have those very close ties, you cannot have defense cooperation to begin with, and it would not be meaningful to any degree. So I would like to turn to Dr. Yang, because you are researching these areas, perhaps because, you know, the recent trends. Can you tell us a little bit more about your thoughts on this issue?
It's like this, I mean, we, we are aiming for the, you know, future system, you know? You know, you, you might remember that back in, you know, you know, 2000s, I mean, US said about, you know, future combat systems, and, I mean, they, you know, were promised a lot of, you know, beautiful future, you know? I mean, no one died, like, let's say. And they are, like, like, ten, twenty years ago, they are thinking that, okay, Reagan is the future. Now, now what's happening? I mean, they spend all the money and, and, I mean, I mean, we don't know, I mean, where it's going, right? And the thing is that US is, you know, always, I mean, they are worrying about, I mean, oh, we might, you know, we might lose to the Chinese or, you know, all the other, all the other, you know, competitor, yeah? And they are still looking for the game changer. Is this a right, you know, step? So, I mean, all of a sudden, US, I mean, US or other, you know, other countries, you know, all just suppose the same, they are talking about the mosaic warfare. See? The, I mean, the beauty of the mosaic warfare is that, that, I mean, you're using the very limited resource and forces and allocate it to the, you know, right place, right time, like, like, I mean, if, if you are calling Uber, like, let's say, okay, I need some bomb to drop from point A to B. I mean, you need, I mean, who can respond, I mean, just, just, just came in. I mean, they said, okay, well, I can do it. I mean, I mean, I mean, maybe, I mean, this is the game changer, right? So while we are trying really hard to, you know, get, you know, some, you know, system going, I mean, new, new system game changer, you know, we are, we have to make it, you know, AI, big data, so I mean, I mean, all the others, okay, it might be happening, but I mean, it's not happening now, and you have to defend your country now. So I mean, I mean, we really, really have, have, you know, really careful step, careful roadmap, to get the, make the future real, because I mean, that's why I'm really worried about these, you know, these Korean governments, I mean, depends from four point zero, because I mean, I don't see any specific results in five years. I mean, I, we really should be, you know, careful with this kind of approach. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yang. This is a joke, but I, I don't think that there anyone from the Korean government here at, in this room, or at least I hope not. But in any case, when it comes to defense and military and technologies, when they are brought together, we have to be very prudent and careful, and that is what you said. I think that when it comes to AI, Dr. Borschert, I know that you have studied this aspect as well, and you've also taught, studied game changers. Would you like to add to this?
Yes, I would, I would in particular like to add to the mosaic warfare thing, because I think it's, it's a very good example of the benefits and the risks of defense cooperation. Because when you, when you look at mosaic warfare, the basic idea is that you split up military forces to the smallest entity and reconfigure land elements, sea elements, airspace and cyber elements as you seem fit in a very particular operation. So mosaic warfare, from an American perspective, goes hand in hand with the idea of multi-domain operations, and goes hand in hand with the idea of a so-called, it's an American term, Joint All-Domain Command and Control, JATC II. But this is not a bakery, no? You have to take the whole cake. You just can't take mosaic warfare and stick to your old way of thinking, stick to your old way of procuring. It's either, either you're in or you're not in. So I think it also goes back to what you said in the beginning, as weapons are cultural products, you need to understand what comes with a partner A, B, or C, no? And sometimes, it's, it's easy to go for a slogan, because the slogan suggests that you're interoperable, you have the same common language, but once you open the box that has been sent to you, it says, listen, change this, change this, change this, change this. So I, I would, I would really invite you also to be more critical vis-à-vis the sexy defense concepts, because some of them are extremely critical and complex to implement, in particular when you're talking about a US concept, no? So I think there is this, again, another tension between concepts and joint agreement on concepts and engaging on jointly developing and procuring weapon systems. And again, I think you should, together with your partner, you, you might perhaps first want to engage in joint concept development before you start developing joint products, because in most cases, and then I end, because I know we are running out of time, in most cases, joint products are just eighty percent from one partner and twenty percent from the other partner, but if the other partner takes a bigger financial burden, you just put a marketing label on it, no? Has been done with various missiles, in particular from a big country at the left end of the Indo-Pacific. You can do that, but whether that in the end fulfills your political ambition is a completely different story. So rather be, rather be more modest in what you want to achieve and really try to invest in your own concepts, because it's the concepts of operations that define how you're going to operate future military systems. And whenever you take a defense system from a partner, and then I will shut up, whenever you take a defense system from a partner, you implicitly take over his concepts of operations. And that might be okay, no? But if your ultimate goal is strategic leeway, go the smart way, invest in your own concepts, and spend more time in fixing the concepts before you enter the very challenging defense industrial domain. Thank you.
A warm applause for Dr. Borschert, please. And we began with a discussion about defense industry cooperation, but now we've gone far as talking about military strategy. So I think we would need another round of discussion to go really deep into the details. But anyhow, we really appreciate Dr. Borschert's statement, which was very helpful to us. Unfortunately, I was not able to give ample time to all of our panelists to give, share their thoughts, but it's now time for us to end. But before we conclude, we do want to accept questions from the floor. If you have a question from the floor, please raise your hand. Please identify yourself, your name and your affiliation before you give the question. Please use the microphone for interpretation.
My name is Morten Pæmmer, I'm with the Danish Armed Forces. And coming from Denmark, which is a very small country with even smaller army, we are not in the near future looking to get our own defense industry. So what I'm looking into is acquisition. And how about, we talked about smart defense throughout the years, not really move, going anywhere, but how about smart acquisition? Are you able to support future buyers of weapon systems by, as you said, when you buy the system, you buy the doctrine? So if you can see resemblance in the needs of various countries, can you actually support them, saying, hey, for instance, the move to Poland, I'm very happy about that, I'm looking forward to see how Poland uses the, the new K-2 tanks and so on? But that could be used as a showcase to other European countries who have similar defensive needs as Poland has. So smart acquisition, is that, is that a concept you're, you're looking into employing as, you know, sort of producers of defensive material?
Yes, Dr. Kim, I think that that is up for you. Would you like to please respond to the question that was raised? So Denmark is a country that is not very much engaging in defense acquisition, but there are certain areas where they have to acquire defense weapons, and so that is why they have to be very smart in going about their weapons acquisitions. They have to be very smart and very strategic. So he believes that Korea might be able to maybe provide some kind of supports, maybe pinpoint their support to other partners and other foreign countries. What are your thoughts on that? So that is definitely a very difficult question, and especially more so because Republic of Korea is also thinking of the same dilemma. I think that if Korea can, maybe can engage in some kind of very smart, very tailored, very pinpointed weapons acquisitions, I can say that within Korea, we do have a committee that is set up within the armed forces, so the actual people who would make use of these weapons, and also some representatives from our National Assembly, our Congress, and of course, members from the Defense, the Ministry of National Defense, and our Combined Forces Command. So these stakeholders will come together in, at a committee level to verify whether these weapons are something that we actually really need. Of course, before that, we have that working level documents and the working papers all in front of us, and that information is presented to us so that we can make an informed decision. And so we try to be very prudent and very tailored in our approach, so that we can make sure that we are acquiring really the most relevant systems at the most timely window available. But even then, sometimes we still need room for development. However, we try to make sure that the army, so the armed forces, the actual people who would make use of the weapons, and taxpayer representatives, the politicians can work together at a committee level. Thank you very much for that response. I think that was a very difficult question, but thank you for that intervention. I think that we are way behind schedule, but I think there was one last person who raised her hand. Can somebody please hand over the microphone?
Thank you very much. My name is Al Ghani, I am from Saudi Arabia, Minister of Defense. It was nice, you know, talking about a very important subject. In our case, in Saudi Arabia, we try to restructure the ecosystem for military industry by creating GAMI, which is the Authority for Regulating, SAMI, which is a company for building that, and MOD and other industry area, organization within the country to, which demanding or requesting the organization within the country to, which demanding or requesting the defense industry. The threat always drives the needs for more defense technology. In Korea case, the most imminent threat is North Korea. However, in the cyber and in the space domains, the threat is not even sometimes known. How do you think with current industry challenges we have now, we can meet these challenges in these two domains, especially these, I would call it anonymous domains for us? The threat sometimes anonymous, it's not the closest country, you don't know what's the weapons, how can we do that? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that question. So I do want to share my answer, but I think I would have to ask Dr. Borshet once again for your answer to this question. So on the technology strategies, I think you are the leading expert, so, Dr. Borshet. But please be very brief, and I apologize.
Was spot on. And it shows the dilemma if you really do a threat-based defense planning and a threat-based defense industrial planning. You know, there is that age-old dilemma, are we going threat-based? Are we going capability-based? But I think even if you do it capability-based, it doesn't let you off the hook because what kind of capabilities are you going to do, are you going to need when you talk about space? And this is why I said, and I think Saudi Arabia is a good example, in your own vision 2030, there is a very clear strategic guidance on what you want to achieve and also on how you want to leverage defense-relevant technology for other commercial purposes. And you talked about the two obvious dual-use areas, cyber and space. But keeping in mind what we said at the beginning, that there is growing geo-economic competition, it's also quite obvious that these will be the two areas where everybody will not only look at you and your fellow GCC members, but also other nations. Because all these technologies will be frowned upon because you're, there is a lack of trust on how the technology is going to be used in the end. That's why you and the Emirates are diversifying your partnerships, in terms of whom are you going to cooperate when it comes to space policy. And here comes then the challenge. You both cooperate with Russia. From your perspective, completely legitimate because you say that country has something to offer, but you know how your other partners are going to respond. So this is, I think, the kind of high-level strategic nuancing in the end that you have to fulfill in order, from your perspective, to get the capabilities and technologies that you need to live up to your own vision 2030. Because it's the vision 2030 that drives the whole process. So that goes back to come up with your own concepts, come up with your own strategies, and then make the case for your position. It's not easy, but this is what has to be done.
Thank you very much. I think that I would like to, because we have to conclude the session, I just want to add a little bit to what Dr. Borshet has said, that when it comes to new technologies such as space or AI, we have to understand how we're going to feel those technologies. And that is why experience will be very important. I can say that Korea is already experiencing this within the Ministry of National Defense and within DAPA. There is a new department on cyber and space and AI. So there are these different organizations that have been set up within the Ministry of National Defense in DAPA to respond to this. AI is not an area that is very vague and blurry. They actually, it is a real technology and it really exists. And this is because it, for us, particularly Northeast Asia, is an area that is geostrategically very important. And we have to consider these technologies such as AI. And because there is an ever-present threat in the Asia-Pacific theater, that is why we are trying to use all of these different technologies at our disposal. And I believe that we also have Gulf cooperation in the Gulf region on this issue. So I think that in the future, we can have more opportunities where we can engage in cooperation in these different technological areas. I thought of some questions that I wanted to ask the panelists, but I did not even have to go back to my notes because although this was a small group talk, a small panel discussion, we had a very active and very vibrant discussion where we touched upon all the key relevant points. So I would like to thank our panelists as the moderator. By conclusion, I can say that there is always going to be this area of competition and cooperation. There's going to be trade-offs there. And then military and technology and the civilian sector and the government. So we talked about many different areas regarding these different points. I think that this was an excellent panel discussion. Thank you very much to all of our panelists for their excellent interventions. And of course, to our participants for their interest. Hopefully, in the near future, we can have more of these discussions on a more interesting, more insightful topic.
Moderator and panelists, thank you. Thank you for your time and thought-provoking insights. Thank you once again. And now, ladies and gentlemen, this comes to the end of all of our special sessions of the Seoul Defense Dialogue 2022. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your cooperation and support and especially our panelists for sharing your excellent insights with us as well. Now for tomorrow, the Plenary Session 3 is scheduled to start at 9:30 a.m. at the Crystal Ballroom on the second floor. We would look forward to welcoming you for another fruitful program. So we look forward to seeing you again. Thank you once again and enjoy the day. Thank you.